I always know. It's quiet, we're about ready to go. Great crowd tonight, thank you all for being here for this regular meeting of the Delaware City Council. Can I have a little call please?
Councilmember Uwe.
Preston.
Councilmember Hallack.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Berger.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the people of this country. One nation, united in its well, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is public comment, general public comment must be given what matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. Public comment is now open.
Good afternoon, I'm Cecilia Posco. And I'm just coming to bring to light more of an issue with our water. It's been seeming more of an increase of our water. And I think it's very important for our cities to have more control of our system. And you know, these increases may seem small, a four percent, a fair four percent there, but our cost of living doesn't go up as much. So please consider us having control of our water system versus these increases keeping impacting us.
Thank you.
I've got a question about the airport, I know you can't answer me, but for the moment, there's sort of a meeting I went to, they want to put a customs office in there for international. And when I checked and went to the third with the FAA, the only international flights that can land here are private jets. I was also told by the panel there that they cannot control private jets. They have no jurisdiction of them, they can come in anytime they want. And which seems weird that the control tower is not physically there when they come in at two in the morning, but that's what they told me. And they said it's FDA FAA policy. And I don't want any of what we have as a city over, but I would say that we need to look into it closely about a customs office that's going to just benefit our very wealthy residents. And if they can come in at any time of the day, day or night, I personally don't want it, and I'm sure there's many like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. I always like to start off a meeting when I get a chance to recognize outstanding achievement, and that's what I do today. And it's for three local area high school students who are being recognized through the Moose International Organization. And specifically, it's the Youth Awareness Award, which recognizes and rewards with college scholarships, high school students who deliver talks to children about current issues. And some of those current issues may involve drug and alcohol abuse, bullying, health and nutrition, those types of topics. These students won an all expense paid trip to South Dakota to compete for those scholarships. And from what I understand, it's up to $12,000 that they could potentially get in scholarship money. What I'd like to do is ask Ann to come up and maybe say.
She chickened out.
She did, okay, so.
Like she chickened out.
We're lucky that we have Mark here.
She chickened out.
Who is our Monterey Moose Lodge administrator. But I'll tell you, you know, I think Mark deserves a much more fancier title than that. He does so much, and we really appreciate it, Mark, not only for the community, but also for the for the city of Delaware Oaks. So thank you so much.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Alrighty, so I'm going to tell you first a quick little bit about the Moose Lodge. We're a cultural organization that we have two major focuses, that is kids and seniors. We have a retirement community in Winter Park, Florida for seniors, and we have Moose Part, which is in outside of Chicago. Basically a boarding school, they take a lot of kids out of foster care and put them in kind of like a home setting with you have your home parents, you have a house. And these kids go through school and get out of the system and get well taken care of. So we have a passion for kids and a passion for seniors. And that's what Moose International does locally. This little lodge down the street has partnered, in the last year, we partnered with 88 different groups and organizations. And we're really big on kids with special needs, we're really big on fundraising for great, great people and organizations. I am stoked to be here tonight because we're honoring three students, two of them are here tonight, one just got added. And basically, the scholarship program is, the kids come, they come to lodge, they hear about this opportunity. They have to go give brief talks to little kids or younger kids about their passion or what feeds their soul. Those get rated and scored, and then they take seven kids from the state of California that go to South Dakota. To get one kid in this from your lodge is a huge honor. I'm stoked to say we have three from our great big metropolis of Delaware Oaks. And we have two students from Monterey High and one student from Marina High. So we're going to acknowledge them. I am stoked that these kids, A, they'll get to travel, and they have to leave mom and dad at home. It's got to get your legs underneath them, stand as tall and walk proud. And while they're on distributed, treated like VIPs, they're having thumb meals at other Moose Lodges, and they're touring and doing all kinds of great fun stuff. We raise money to pay for this. And we, Moose International says we have to give each kid $200 to spend for spending money. They go, they compete for money, but they come back, they're given $500 regardless how they did there. I opened my big mouth at the meeting for these kids, and I said, there are so many of you. Somebody from this room is going to make it on this trip, and when you do, the lodge is going to give you $200 bucks, and I'm going to give you $300 bucks out of my pocket. But, but you have to spend the money on the trip. Go wild, go crazy, do something wild and fun with it. You're going to get $500 when you come back, and you're probably going to win money when you're there. So I stuck my foot in my mouth, so imagine how thrilled I was when we got our third kid. And we had two students and an alternate, one of the kids from down south dropped out of the program. And so they sent the first alternate happens to be from Monterey High, and I said yay. My little cousin Tommy Doon, our principal Doon, Tommy Doon. My little cousin is the principal of Monterey High, so I texted him tonight and said, I don't know if I ever told you, but this is what we're doing. It's like, I am so stoked, I can't wait to see them. So he's super, super thrilled. I talked to Ms. Olson over at Marina High, and they're happy to hear about their student as well. So I'm going to let you do the honors of recognizing them and recognizing some really awesome kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So it's a certificate of recognition given through the city of Delaware Oaks, and I'm going to read it. And it basically says, this certificate is given to the following, given to the following individuals. Cara Douglas from Monterey High. Victor Torres from Marina High. Bobby Levine also from Monterey High. In recognition of being chosen to attend the 2025 Moose International Youth Awareness Scholarship Program, representing the Monterey Moose Lodge as one of only seven students in California to attend. Your hard work and dedication are commendable.
I have Victor Torres right here.
Okay, why don't both of them come on?
All right, and Cara, where are you at? Oh, right here.
Okay. Yeah, I'm right up in the middle, and Mark, if you could come up too, that would be awesome. I got all dressed up.
Ann, will you come up with us? That's the president of our lodge.
Oh, absolutely. She's the shake hands and kiss babies, I'm the money guy. That's the same term you learned in chat.
Ann, wherever you would like.
Ann, right here. Boys against girls. We're going to win some money. We're going to win some money. Okay, now we're going to clear up here.
Thank you once again for being here, really appreciate it. All right. Yeah, I'm going to write somewhere, I'm near my phone, but somebody can get back to you.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
All right, we'll move on to less exciting type stuff. We'll start with the consent agenda. Are there any items amongst the council that you would like?
I like to post your own.
Okay, any other items? Any items from the public that you would like to hold? All right, so item C1, which is to consider the approval of Resolution 2025-2, the submittal of the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2024. Would you like to take that for Denise? Okay, wait, would you?
Probably, probably, probably Denise.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just have some questions or maybe some comments on some of the items. I'm ready. Okay, so this is, this is, this first one, ten of comments. So on page 62, Program D3, and we talk about information being provided on the city website and the housing resources page. And I found the housing resources page by searching it, like putting it into the search bar. But I could not figure out how to click to it. So like, if anyone was coming to our website, they wouldn't even know that these housing resources information exists. Because I'm not sure if they would be anything that would trigger that. So my first comment is, can we just make it a little bit more visible, maybe make a direct link on the homepage?
I would defer to the city clerk, Erin. But before that was sent out, we did a double check, and it was a direct link.
So where, like, can you just describe on the website where I go?
It's down the deck. When you click that link, it's going to go to the website on the housing element page.
So the housing, the housing resources page is what I'm talking about.
Right, that's where it goes to.
And, and, oh, so they have to go to our housing element to get to that housing resources information link?
The right number. So I think there's two different things that may be being referenced here. One is that there's a housing page, housing element page, which identifies all the different reports, et cetera, that have been conducted for the city, right on the housing element. And then the other is related to housing programs, which require and suggest a need outreach for where resources are, where the needs are for the community, such as bedrooms or other resources. And I think on the secondary one, I, I don't know exactly how to answer your question in terms of how it's clicked on now.
So it's under, it's under community.
And I think that's where the resources pages are with the city, and we can sort of take a look at it, if it's visible.
Yeah, if you could just, yeah, because I under community, I didn't see any housing resources, I had to search for it and then found the housing resources page. So anyways, if we could just make it easier to find them.
Interesting, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then on page 63, Program C2, in your update, you mentioned that this, that the city provides updates on the number of new ADUs that are being built each year in the APR and in building permit reports. I'm just wondering, for the number of new ADUs in this APR?
Housing element APR has an Excel spreadsheet, about 20 different pages, and that does include them. And the city keeps an annual tracking through more of ADUs.
So do we know how many in, yes, in 2024?
Yes, it's been reported annually in housing elements, APR, and I think also in January, it's reported HCD. This year, it's dependent on whether you call it final issued, et cetera. But 2024, there was one final, there was 2025, there is three, I think, ready to be filed. There's one that was already just submitted in 2025, so we're.
This is in order to be on plan from 2024. Yes.
Final, and that's what they call, that's what we need to track for HCD, APR, that's how you're allowed to be reporting.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. Okay, on page 164, let's see, Program C5. This is just kind of a note to everyone, that it states that the city is currently working on H2E, their fine programs, that the city will work towards elements adoption after we have a compliant housing element. So in other words, within 12 months from having a compliant housing element, we're going to update the safety element and adopt an environmental justice element. So I think we should keep that in mind as we look towards the budget for next year, so I can point that out. So I'm excited about going through that process. Okay, 65. See, this is Program D1. We mentioned that the city is going to provide housing resources information in both English and Spanish. I saw it in English, I was wondering if we got a plan for getting that information out in Spanish?
At this point, the city commits to providing housing information in both English and Spanish, but we have not done this. This, by the way, is very important to understand, the annual progress report is what has been done during the calendar year 2024. So this is not to say what we're going to be doing, but this is what we've done. So it's the progress on implementation, so that's a fair statement to say.
No, I, I believe it is fair, I wasn't calling it not fair. I was curious if we have a plan for, if we're going to commit to that, can we have a plan for getting that information in Spanish?
Those are good questions also to be discussed during our housing element update, about this and the question related to the safety element. Because this is talking about programs that, what we're going to be doing, and so I think maybe more for that discussion. At this point, the focus of the city has been on a compliant housing element. It's not been on specifically trying to, as we reported to the planning commission, on trying to meet and progress on each of these programs. Because the focus, the programs may be devised by HCD, so it's important for us to work on getting the housing element compliant prior to working on program implementation.
Yeah.
And that's where the resources are available.
That's right, it's just the, you know, so we committed, which I'm great, happily did. I just don't remember having a conversation about what that's going to look like, so I just want to hide that, it's okay. On page 66, Programs D5 and D6, talked about AD 101 and AD 2162, saying that we're compliant. But that we haven't done the written process for compliance?
That's correct.
Okay, I don't even know what those are, so maybe when we do talk about the housing element, if you can address what those are and what it would take to have the written compliance. Yes, okay. And then in, on page 66, let's see, D10. So the city has initiated outreach to extremely low income households. And I was curious what that means, it being some outreach.
Conduct outreach to assist the development of housing for ELI households. Conduct outreach by 2025 by end thereafter. For us, that means we reached out to Echo Housing, other housing providers. And you'll see more specifically in the, yeah, in the housing element itself, but those are the compliance actions.
Okay, so it was just us reaching out to the, to developers who would be building affordable housing?
It's a longer program than that, but the goal of today's hearing or meeting on the housing element update is to discuss the housing element HCD comments. And then we're bringing back for full review each of the programs and the revisions of the programs after more public input. So that you can, yeah, the council can look to each of those programs as they've been currently developed, and they've been thus far approved or asked to be amended by HCD.
Yeah, no, I understand, but if we're going to submit this report, I just, and I'm going to approve this report, I just want to have a point of understanding.
Yes, in terms of the outreach, those, that's what it means.
Okay, all right. That's it for me.
Okay, do I have to approve the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item is old business, which is leans right into it, the Housing Element Six Cycle Status Update, Denise, you're on role.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wish I could pass it to this. Thank you. We have a short presentation on the housing element update, so I'd like to repeat that as we move through the slides. Andy, you want?
Just a quick note, I'm not seeing it on my screen. One second.
So tonight, we're here, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to go over some of the HCD comments we received on revised housing element that was presented in September and October 2024. After that joint meeting, we submitted the revised housing element to HCD. You may recall, this is the document that was submitted to HCD, one of the many. And we were received, we received formal, informal comments on the housing element on January 16th, 2025. Tonight's meeting provides the opportunity to review the HCD comments, provide a status update, and talk about next steps. And we hope to do that quickly today and then open it up for questions. Once we go through HCD's comments and requests, there's no actual action tonight. We will continue to work with the city manager on revisions and with HCD on revisions, and we'll do that through the public process as well. So this is just a reminder, the city's arena regional housing needs analysis, that allocation is 270 units, that's unaccommodated need for the fifth and fifth cycle plus the sixth cycle. We did complete the rezoning for the city, and they've added residentially zone vacant sites to meet the housing need now, the city does. And each of the HCD housing element includes the goals and policies and programs to accommodate the need that's required by housing element law. So this is a reminder of the many times you've seen me to get together on the housing element. It's a robust public meeting process. And this is just the sixth cycle, housing element, public review process, public meeting process. Each of the, I want to go back just a second, thanks. Each of these represents an agenda package or a product or a, the actual housing element. So if you recall, we had a housing element draft, we had workshops, we had an in-person workshop, special planning commission meetings, revised draft, draft that was published for 30-day reviews after getting comments. Another draft that was published and submitted to housing, to the housing at HCD, and then ultimately, an approved document in December of 2023, after that rezoning was completed. And that was in the timeframe that was required, rezoning was completed within the timeframe. And then a number of different additional planning commission, city council meetings. As you recall, that October 17, 2024, or October 30, 2024, was a full review of all of the changes that were made based upon the February 2024 review comments from HCD. And so the city has had a chance to go through and review each of the revisions prior to the submittal in October to HCD revised draft, I think that was a second revised draft officially. And now we're getting ready to prepare the third revised draft. We've been in communication with HCD, and so the purpose of tonight is to give you a review of the HCD comments. Talk about some of our, some of our concerns or questions regarding the timeframe on and the program requirements. Next slide. Reminder, the housing elements, each of the programs that are discussed in the housing element are under these major goals. Housing opportunities, affordable housing, removal constraints, equal housing opportunities, and quality housing opportunities. So when you see D1, C1, C2, they're referenced by these goals. Next slide. So today, we're going to discuss the comments. We want to identify that primarily the comments from HCD were on additions to programs or changes to programs. Overall, the comments on the entirety of the document are fairly minor, we've completed most of them. And there are some additional comments on programs and the affirmative for really fair housing, AFFH process. And we want to really discuss next steps tonight, and talk to you about when we're coming back and what we're doing. So our next discussions, our next steps are really going to be completing the minor comments and revisions, meeting with the city manager and HCD on programs and timing. So I'll be discussing with the city tonight, some of the concerns that we have heard been raised before regarding the feasibility of the resources this city to complete the programs as identified in the housing element, and how to address that with HCD. Once we complete our revisions to the programs, we'll post it on the city website. We'll hold a planning commission, city council workshop like we have done in the past. So planning commission will also become a part of this process, if they have very much so. And look at each of these program revisions specifically. We'll make sure that we have seven to 10 days of the programs and the, and the HCD, I'm sorry, and the housing element on the website prior to doing that. And, and then once we rescind and revise and send the updated housing element policies, programs, and document itself to HCD after getting comments. So, next slide. These are a few of the review comments that you have before in the packet. You went, we submitted the entirety of HCD comment, written formal comment letter on AFFH. They have, the common goal is provide specificity, provide the comments, provide actions, incentives, provide metrics, which is how many units you're going to have and how many acres and what timeframe, and how are you going to accomplish this? And adding actions, those are very, that's common HCD comments. And they talk a lot about adding metrics. And one of the things is increasing housing mobility, which is moving people up to the front of your housing building. HCD has also provided additional sample programs, which are used in the past. However, we will discuss during our program review in our next meeting, what more actions we need to do and how. However, we will discuss during our program review in our next meeting, what more actions we need to do and how we can discuss that with HCD. Next slide. Again, we've, good news is of the chapters themselves, very little revisions. Focus is really on the programs and a little bit on AFFH gap analysis. Next slide. The gap analysis is looking into, for your special needs groups, where are the resources and where are the needs? And is there a gap in between those? With this city as small as steroids, there's very little data to be able to identify, but we're trying, but we have updated that information. The other important comment from HCD is even though the city doesn't have any farm workers in the area. HCD wants to make sure the city looks at farm workers, does a regional need and has programs. Includes, includes the farm workers and their special needs group too, so we have done that. Other than that, there's very little change. Next slide. So, as I said, revising programs to add timelines, actions, metrics. One request was adding a new program to reach outreach to the selected developer to provide affordable housing. To just ensure that we're moving forward as, as the selected developer is meeting on a regular basis with the city. This is something that's actually already been done, so we did a better program of that, which we'll share at our next meeting when we share the draft programs. And. I think that's it, next slide. I'm going to go through these programs individually, just so you know, this is just summary that was included in the packet. Just to let you see that while they're looking at a lot of different programs for additional metrics, additional incentives and things like that. So we'll be discussing that with HCD again. Excellent. So these will be the individual comments from HCD, this is an example of one that's very, very minor. This is also an opportunity to, a little primer on how to read the chart from HCD. When it has. When it says yes, that means nothing more is needed in that column, the third column, I think it is. And when it has the. I can't remember kind of what that thing is, that means it's fine, just go ahead and go on to the next one. And then although there's a lot of text on there, the, the point is, as HCD says, look at the yellow highlights, that's, that's what we want you to do. The left-hand side is really what their status, their previous letter said. And then the yellow highlight is what needs to be done, so that kind of helps us understand where, where we are. And as an example for the emergency shelters, we basically did what we needed to do. But the minor comment was, will tell us, since emergency shelters need to be located, your services tell us more specifically what services are there. So that's already been done, next slide. So again, here's the highlighted text to identify. What needs to be done for program C four. It's annually monitoring to commit to rezoning if you don't have enough water available. C nine include discrete timing for applying for funding. We have a C nine, if you may recall from our lovely meetings from before. This was a new program that we identified, that's how we, what's a program to commit to extending infrastructure. So we provided that program, the minor change is, tell us what your timing is, not just to apply for funding for, for. Construction, I mean, till the extension, minor change. Program C two is the, is the ADU program. We included. Standardized plans as a, as a typical ADU program. And what is your, they just asked for what your timing is for when you're going to put those in, so we just put in different metrics, timeframes for that in our draft thus far. They also like to make sure, what are you going to do to, what incentives are you having? Are you going to provide to, for A two increase sure you do use, which are maintaining, monitoring, complete your ADUs? So that's something we'll be discussing in our next meeting. And also a minor thing, but a target, what affordability levels, if you want, if you're trying to track. ELI, extremely low income, low income, et cetera. Next slide. Again, I talked about the gap analysis, this is really in the AFFH chapter. And then a minor change in the site inventory, chapter three, is just making sure our two tables are consistent. So you can see we're narrowing down what we need to be doing, which is good news. And then, next slide. And then these are actually discussed in discussions more and requests more on the programs. And that's specifically what we, we need to discuss further with HCD. They're asking for additional earlier timing, some of the programs. And the city council and the planning commission was, have been very clear in our previous meetings that one concern that they have that's universal is. How can this city maintain and have the resources to complete all of the programs within the timeframes that are being requested? And in certain cases, they're asking for more specific and shorter timeframes. So this is why we're going back to HCD before we go back to the city with these revisions to the programs to ask again. And then the other one on the. Outreach the selected developer, that's a new one that we discussed about. And adding farm workers, that is something that we've added and we'll be showing you in the next slide, it's really just adding that name. Next slide. So there, this is sort of interesting, they're asking that metrics in program A two. And that program is identifying where. Other. Mixed use areas are, if you recall, we have a site suitability analysis. We talked about site one A, one N one in former corridor. We have the buffer sites in former corridor. HCD wanted us to take a look at what other, the city, some members of the city council wanted us to take a look at, what other available areas are there? So we concentrated on the areas of Cuyahoga Oaks and that area where there's some to utilize commercial space. And so they're asking us to identify. Metrics that go beyond arena and then look back at my notes for the HCD. What they mean by that is they want to say, what can you do beyond what you're already providing with Rena? In these different areas, should you need to, so we'll go back and clarify with that. But we are also putting different locations. The other thing is they said target which areas these are. So for Delros, we say it's the area by Cuyahoga Oaks where, you know, ATT is. But they want us to identify blocks, census tracts. Say, well, there's only two census tracts or three census tracts, but we've identified different blocks. So it's just putting little different details in it that they're used to seeing for larger cities, quite frankly. Small lot development, actions to facilitate small lot development. We think, they want to see something like that five, five units or about five minutes or less. We need to talk with them about the small lot development, there's very little places where you didn't have, yes, small lots developed outside of the former corridor. Because the city doesn't have any available space. So we are going to talk to you again when we come back to the program about what you think in terms of those numbers. To ensure that we're not overstating. And then. Again, required metrics way beyond affordability under Rena. Specifying target areas for single family housing for vouchers, that makes a lot of sense to me. Specifying if you're going to go after housing vouchers. And this, they would like to see the city employ more housing vouchers to the moderate county housing authority. If that's the possibility, they want us to identify not just the middle, our small, different area where that. Single, multifamily, but also having that opportunity in single family residences as well. And that's possible with vouchers perhaps, if someone has an ADU that want to rent. They also want us to promote housing vouchers to the city. And then there'd be seven, if you recall, is the preferential housing for teachers, so it was under law that was approved. That if a housing, if a school district or has a property. That there's a law that says we could, you know, provide this, this district could provide, could provide affordable housing development within that. And since one or two, a school district wrote a letter, we, and the council approved, we put in a B seven, a show policy to promote that. And they just asked us to include additional actions to outreach to APUs SD. To ensure that we, that they, we show that we're doing what needs to be done in order to promote that. Excellent. C two, they bore ADU incentives. Developing a citywide registry, we noted that we've, the city has, you know, totally ADUs and Laura and the city staff keep. Specific control and have the register of that, we understand, we get a quarterly report, a DNA of how the ADUs being monitored and we monitor that. So we just need to add some of that information and they also want alternative marketing outside the city, we're going to be discussing that with HCD. And targeting areas within the single family housing for A two, so that is where single ADUs are typically built. So we're just identifying the block areas. And. Specifying numbers of, of fair housing outreach, how, who are you outreach into and how many metrics for universal design? Metrics for number of units for special needs. And we have, they asked for two strong mobility actions. Requiring marking outside the city as identified before. Next slide. We've been developing and keep on updating and stopped updating because it, it changes so much with each HCD. But we are tracking by year, the number of the programs, what the requirement is, what type, what it falls into. And then what needs to be done. The city asked last time that we ensure that we promote a report on progress. So we have a partnership board for this year for twenty twenty four. But this will be a tool to be able to be, be used for what is needed to be done, when, by which quarter, within each, within each year. And it's also going to be a tool for us to discuss with HCD. I'll be able to do this feasibly and reasonably within the resources of the city. Next slide. So with that, we really are hoping to just have answering questions. Give you, after the closing of the public meeting, we have our set of next steps and a timeframe of what we're going to be doing next. So we can discuss that with you, but we're just here to ask any questions and there's no action. This is really a status update, just wanted to ensure that you saw what we heard from HCD.
All right, thank you Denise, I'll start with the council for questions and comments and I'll, I'll start with Vice Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Duffy and associates out there. One thing that comes to mind when my last comment, my comments last met was that if personally with these timelines out as far as possible to allow us a little flexibility. That would be wonderful, but it looks as though the HCD, the HCD is not allowing. Such a way, and just overall in general, I'm just seeing that. These are probably very anticipated responses and revisions requested. And I like that you mentioned that we are. Closing in on it, so to speak, kind of trimming the fat. But I'd also like to note that this is a, an additional visit on your behalf of source. And to further a public outreach and to appeal to this council as requested by the council. And I'm sure that the community, the five members here, one of which is the planning commissioner. And the six. Which five of which are probably residents, all appreciate that as well, those that try to navigate the city websites and bring any information. Thank you for your very diligent work. It seems as though all is as it should be and again anticipated. And I, as one council member, will deter, defer to. Your expertise as this is and have the utmost confidence in that and look forward to seeing you for your next update.
Right, council member, sure.
Thank you Denise, I appreciate having your slides and having you walk through all of those edits. I, I really have no additional questions, it sounds like our biggest concern is really timing for implementing these programs. That's my sense for our presentation, so I, I'll, I'll be interested to hear what you hear from HCD and what we can, what we can implement recently, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, I really appreciate your diligence and honesty on this. It's a long, long amount of work, they're looking at this, this kind of project. So thank you, I also want to thank my people. Very much, I heard you live and say, we love, really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you Denise for this update and we really appreciate that. I just have some questions, if, just please bear with me. So for the, for the first one, because HCD provided a lot of those programs, like program revisions and, and. Seems like they're good, they're good suggestions, they, they wanted us of those measurable metrics and affordability. And I was just wondering if, if these comments were also being provided when we were doing the fifth element cycle? Or are these new?
Thank you, they're not exactly the same comments, the fifth element had its own programs. We adopted many other programs and updated from the fifth cycle. So half, half, half are new, half are from the, well, no, I think we really responded to the fifth cycle comments. So these are really specific to six cycle to answer questions, really.
Okay, so, so it seems like every cycle, still enough, probably provide or suggest a recommend programs, it is a.
That's correct, and that's very typical of all the other cities, they've gone through three or four iterations of their housing elements. And this is really getting to the end game and we're in, yeah, common ground with others.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I know we've gone through many of these cycles, housing element cycles that we had. What implementation challenges that we had before? And then what can we learn from those so that maybe at least we can also believe in our six cycle element?
Well, I think the interesting thing is that although there have been a number of cycles or every eight years. The, when the fifth cycle was adopted, that was the first housing element adopted, I think, in twenty years. So the city hasn't really gone through. The typical each cycle, the fourth and, that's why we're have to carry over a fourth and fifth cycle arena. But I, I think the, what the challenges, challenges from any jurisdiction. And to, and especially in ours, especially we talked about the ability with a city with small, or a city with small resources. To actually accomplish all that is identified as a program. Now remember, this is the general plan element, it's a housing element, you're not required to complete each of the programs. It's what you're trying to achieve. And we'll, we'll be tracking that and keep moving forward as much as we can.
Thank you for that master Denise. And I'm also wondering, while you were briefing us with all of the qualifications from, from HCD. And, and they're trying to put in their, like, some programs such and such. And where can we find resources or information to fit in those requirements that they, they require us?
So each, HCD has a very long, big website. So that you can Google housing element resources on HCD, each of the statutes that are identified, you can identify those. I mean, typically, what's happened in the last four to five years is that every year, there is more and more legislation related to housing. And requirements for housing, so it's really, that may be a little tougher to keep track of, but there are many of those as well.
Okay, so this is good to know that we can probably track those things from HCD website. And two more questions. How can the public help with this? So, because I was like wondering, like, because there are, there were a lot of those requirements that HCD. That provided our six cycle element, so, because I was just wondering, like, even my part and the public in here. How can they provide support and help with this?
I'll defer to city manager on that one.
Speaking in terms of volunteerism or coming up to try to comment and.
Yeah, so like, like, if we can provide that input for, for those programs. And then what would be those reasonable programs that we can have? And then, because I just want to make sure that the public has, has that voice, has that really say in those. Before we go into the housing element.
Yeah, I think, I think it's tough for a city our size to generate that kind of public interest and public input. What we can provide and what our future opportunities are, are fairly limited. And so you saw a list of all of the public meetings that we've had, uh, and since Denise has been involved in this, just since two thousand twenty-three. It's time involved, uh, and this is the biggest turnout we have at any of those meetings. Generally speaking, our public here, who we reach out to and will talk to already have phones. And so they're not really looking at a housing element necessarily. You can, uh, that personally, unless they're thinking about future children, grandchildren, uh, which they should. So that's where housing becomes personally important to those of us who own phones, if we have families. Uh, but to the providers that Denise mentioned, who provide the own compality, who provide the own compality opportunities. Uh, they're showing up to the sixth council meeting, presents the calibies, means, city honor, is that's bigger than, uh, provided for their more opportunity, um, it's over the comment, probably, in the city. How can we expect here?
So, so the problem we can also email, uh, maybe it's for ours.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, yeah, they can call with coming to the counter. Uh, we've done Zoom meetings to drive people, it's been, oh, yeah, so we tried many different options, so, yeah, talk to your neighbors.
Yes, uh, thank you, thank you, John. And one more thing, uh, when, when, of course, this, uh, agenda was brought up, uh, and then, uh, when I, oh, it's a very long document and then you even show it to us and, and it's even longer than my dissertation. So that's why, uh, I asked one of my house, household members, uh, will you be able to read this for me? You know, so, because, uh, but then when he already, like, looked at the land and he already, like, withdrawn, uh, the request. So, but, but however, it seems like a council and I have to read everything. So, uh, my, my only, uh, probably, uh, wish and, uh, how can we make, uh, because the, the, the housing element is so technical and, and this affects all of the homeowners and all the people who are here in Delray Oaks. And, and how can we make it relatable and understandable for them?
Well, I think there's two aspects to that question. And the, the first one I want to address is what would you be looking for when you review the housing element? Recall that the city council, my information, the council adopted a full housing element in December of twenty twenty-three. So in, in twenty twenty-four, we showed you all of the changes within that housing element and that was highlighted in track changes. So it was very clear. So then that was then presented to H C D. So this next time, what you're going to be seeing is, I think right now it's highlighted in, in really sharp, sharply blue. Uh, you'll be looking for the changes that have been made and that makes it a little bit easier for you and, uh, your associates to help to review because it's really about what you've already seen and what's changed within that and are you accepting what's changed? And that's what H C D is looking at. Um, and then the second part of your question, I forgot, I know.
Like, so how can we make it really simple and, and, uh?
Well, I think trying to, to do PowerPoints, it's, you know, it's helpful on being available for office hours and, uh, counter, things like that. We've had, you know, people ask questions, we're available to answer them. And we, relatable, I, I think John mentioned that, when people are interested though, they will relate to.
Thank you, Denise. And thanks so much for, for answering every question. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'll take it out to the public. Uh, if any member of the public has any questions or comment, please come up to the podium so that those online can, can hear your question or your comment. Okay.
Just a comment. Seems to me. Michael Bryan and work at Delray Oaks. It seems to me if a lot of these programs were implemented down the road in the end, it's going to put a terrible strain on our staff. And I think that's something you should all recognize. How, that was, we're going to have to get more employees to handle it and it seems like a measurable task to take care of.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, um, Denise.
I, I do have one more slide.
Yes, please.
If you're indulgent, um.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. We lost it on the, I'll go back there.
So, uh, uh, thank you. So I wanted to just outline the short term and the longer term steps to that we plan. Um, as I mentioned, we, uh, we're going to be meeting with the H C D staff, uh, setting up the meeting now to address city concerns, find resources from Mr. Bryan, and staff resources and concerns for timing of programs. We will then make appropriate revisions to the programs and we are, uh, complete the revisions that requested H C D. We want to present that back to y'all, uh, with, uh, so you can see the detail, the changes when we're out of the time to publish that. And then we'll submit, um, on the city website, we'll publish it and then we'll submit the revised draft to H C D. And we're trying to do that within the next month. I really want to push on the, uh, schedule a little bit. And, um, H C D can conduct an informal review of the changes. We're hoping to do some back and forth with them so they give us input while they see their revised programs. And, and, um, with that process, the meeting with them, when revised programs are needed, coordinate with the city council about any changes. But also if they do find they have an element to be, almost what they want. Then they'll be working with us and they'll send us a letter that says, you're, you're good to go. You may essentially, you may adopt this document now as we've, as they've done with the internal changes. And with that, the city adopts, uh, we cleaned it up so you don't see at all the track changes. The city adopts the formal document and then, um, they essentially, they're sending, they first send a letter saying, if you do this, you'll be in substantial compliance. So then they adopt the formal housing element and then officially later they give you the substantial compliance laid out in the letter. So that's the process for undertaking.
All right, Denise, thank you so much for your presentation, um.
Actually, can we ask one?
Yes, uh, please come on up to the podium.
Thank you. Lisa Soria Rosso from Delray Oaks. Uh, regarding, uh, the Cayenne Oaks, that's where possibly, um, housing would be going in, how would that happen? Uh, if there's businesses there, um, you know, the traffic, uh, it's such a closed in area. We're kind of interested of how that would work if that's really outside of anywhere else that you're really looking at. How would that be filled and the amount of units, et cetera?
So the, that area is one of the existing mixed use or commercial areas within the city. It's identified in terms of the tiers of where it's easiest to develop at the bottom level because it is, um, a little more problematic. It's also within the, uh, airport influence area. And, uh, right now there's no water for development within the county service area, Monarch and some water management district, of which that area is a part. So any logistics regarding how it would be done or the number of units, um, I don't really have the answers for now. I do see it as a, uh, something that they said, that H C D said, if it doesn't happen for site one, a former port or, or their, uh, ends, the buffer sites and the Monarch and see the bicycle district site, which covers our arena, uh, reasonable how, how, regional housing needs allocation. If it doesn't happen there, we also want you to consider, and the city, uh, council had said, consider this area as well, it's underutilized. Um, and so that's how it's looked at now. Um, if there were to be anything that's proposed there, it would be a long process. There has to be, uh, applications, site plans, development, um, infrastructure that would service that, the water. Um, the city would have to somehow, um, work with the airport district regarding the airport influence area. It's within an area that's right within one of the flight patterns, so it's a hazard area. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, any other comments or questions from either the public or the council? Okay, Denise, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I'm, I'm really happy to see that, where we kind of have it, as, as you were saying, narrowed down to just either liner or no changes, uh, to the document itself. So I'm very happy about that. Would it be safe to say that a lot of the issues that are still out there uh, generate at H C D from, let's say, a checklist that maybe is applicable to larger cities but wouldn't necessarily apply to Delray Oaks? Perfect example is the farm worker housing, that we're being asked to address a situation that maybe doesn't necessarily apply to us. Um, or the Cayenne, you know, Oaks situation that was just brought up, that there are so many challenges out there to developing that, that, that essentially it's not a viable, uh, site for us to include in there. And so is, is that kind of where we are in the process?
I think I understand your question and yes, the city is being considered, uh, as, as one of many other cities. Um, you know, like Los Gatos, Los Altos, other cities that have the staff and the ability and the land, uh, to develop. So a lot of the programs are typical, typical programs that they would look to other cities to do. So in that sense, yes, I think your statement's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and to council member Uli's point, um, and the city manager also addressed it. You saw on Denise's slide, we see it up there. Um, city manager and I are looking to schedule a, a joint planning commission council meeting where once again the public will have the opportunity to come and, and, uh, make comments and, and, and any questions you might have, uh, get answered. We're looking at doing that potentially in the April timeframe next month. So I just wanted to let everyone know that as well. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is new business. And it is the mid-year budget review and amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Elizabeth, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Donaldson and members of the city council. I'm Elizabeth Mariano, R G S consultant. I'm providing you the, the report on the mid-year budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Uh, I don't have this big PowerPoint, but the report is provided in your agenda packet. As a result of the mid-year budget adjustment, we are recommending an increase of thirteen thousand to the revenue and the same amount to the expenditure, so the impact to the fund balance is zero. The revenue and expenditures are still in line. The staff report highlights the changes per department and those are attached, uh, to your report. Uh, as mentioned in the staff report, the total increase is, uh, in the, uh, police department with the following vendors, the Paragon, the Ambeaia, and the Monterey Pines, so the special response and other minor adjustments from the other departments. The estimated revenue is increased by thirteen thousand, which is a combination of decrease in sales tax due to the economy and increase in the interest in life. In the prior year, uh, we estimated conservatively, but now that we're seeing the interests are coming in, uh, with higher than last fiscal year, so we need to adjust it. There's no fiscal impact on the budget. So, uh, we will be happy to answer any question that you have. And the staff is recommending the, uh, approval of this fiscal year twenty twenty-five mid-year budget adjustment.
Right, thank you, Elizabeth. I'll bring it to the council, uh, for questions. Come on in.
Hey, Mayor, no questions, you're all listening for your presentation, Mr. Mariano?
Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. I called, uh, city manager Gerton today and asked all my little nitty gritty questions, so I'm, I'm satisfied with that. So thank you for your work on that. I really appreciate this mid-year budget update. Um, I do want to say that, um, on page one forty-two, um, where we have an estimated ending fund balance of over three million. Now, that's not all going to be available to us next year, um, only a, a small portion of that. But, um, you know, we, we do have some money that we need to figure out what, how we're going to spend it. And I really feel like this should be a collaborative process with all of the council members and with the public. Um, this is, we, we've never had an opportunity as a council to talk about projects, um, in its entirety. Sort of instead of, I like, I, I trust what staff will bring to us. But I feel that the council will also maybe have ideas on how we want to spend money. I mean, there, there are things in this budget. For instance, strategic planning that I've wanted every year and it's never spent, we've never, we've never done strategic planning. And I ask for it every year. So I, I would like to make a pitch that we have a meeting where we can hear about projects. Um, and we can all be part of that process. And really, not only come up with what we want to spend our money on, because that really establishes our values. But we talk about priorities, like what do we want to get done in that timeframe? Because again, there's things in this budget that we haven't been able to get done. And I realize we're limited on staff time. I totally understand that. But at the same time, I feel like this council should be directing staff to follow through on, on some of those projects. Um, I did leave this in mind. I did ask the mayor if we could have a meeting such as that. He refused that concept. He wants to have smaller committee meetings, you know, public safety, public works, parks and rec, finance, which is fine. But we're not all included in those meetings, so I don't feel like it's inclusive. Um, we don't, when, when we hear about projects and also I feel like there may be projects that is that don't fall under those categories. We need to have something where we can kind of fully brainstorm, so. I guess this is just my pitch as we look at the mid-year budget, think about going forward with the budget, um, in this mid-year. I hope that we can, councilmember, because I hope you can advocate residents, I hope you can advocate to be a part of the process. Because we, that's a process that we should all be a part of. And as councilmembers, it's, it's our responsibility to provide direction and to provide what, what our priorities are. And if we don't have an opportunity to talk about that, then we just sort of approve what's given to us and that's it. And I feel like we need to have a bigger, a bigger say in that, so, um. I appreciate this, these mid-year budgets. We, we obviously, you know, budgeted pretty well and there aren't a lot of adjustments, so this is great. I appreciate that. But I feel like there are, there's so many available and we need to talk about what we're going to do and how we're going to do it next year. Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Burke.
I appreciate you, David.
Councilmember Uli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, Elizabeth, thank you for being here and for providing us some, uh, clarity about the, the budget. Because, uh, I know it's very technical, especially for most of us that are so, uh, uh, not for your group, because you've always been looking at these numbers. So, uh, my first question is, because when I look at the, uh, the budget, uh, the mid-review, uh, there was the deficit. It's very modest, I know, uh, but I was just like wondering, uh, what, uh, what, uh, structural deficit that is acceptable for, for a city our size? And how can we eliminate this in the, in the long term? So I was just like, uh, wondering, because I know it's twenty-six thousand deficit there. So, uh, however, it is acceptable of our city, our size, of our city, our size.
There shouldn't really be any, any deficit. It should, the revenues to balance the expenditure, if I'm preparing the budget, you know, what, that wanted the deficit. But that six thousand dollars, I think it has something to do with some carryover. Because when the budget is adopted, it has to meet the expenditure and the revenue. But during the, there will be some carryover and that's why the, from the original budget, then it's revised. And I can get back to you where that six thousand dollars came from. It was really big, like John, we said that it should be covered, we should not have anything.
Since I've been here, we haven't learned.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I was just again, uh we're not used only seeing these reports and uh and then when. And there was just that negative there like the deficit like the six thousand. So I was just wondering. Uh what it is about, but if we should not be concerned of that, that's good. So I agree. It's so not material.
Yes, it's not unusual for cities, especially cities our size, it's not going to carry the deficits occasionally. Uh in the past, we've carried one year after year after year and it came rolling. Um and so that's why we have the economic reserve. That's for potentially we're going into a recession. I've already been for already in recession. For city our size, we're limited revenues. Our revenues get heavily impacted by a recession. So. Yeah, that would get session would be going to discussion about our budget for next year. Uh and plenty of money that I'm sure we talked about. It's some of our buffering to help us get through doubt. We have a little point six billion, which you already funded plus the additional. Um but you know, that's it's our reality that we can base especially in the future. So it's a good topic to start thinking about. Uh there isn't a number of what's been okay, but deficit or a good deficit or anything kind of depends on city to city. In my opinion, no deficit. Uh you should always try not to have that. That's why you have your. These are bigger discussions to have when we talk about budget going forward. But one of the reasons that I have to put forward to you for carrying deficit and using the reserve funds to carry the deficit. Because recession whichever and. Most of our costs are in terms of hours and benefits. It's like you make that in order to balance your budget and get rid of the deficit. That means you're going staff and once the recession go over, you have funding. It's always going to come back and reset a lot of it. So if you have the money to bridge that gap. So like that's a much bigger discussion later.
Yes, thank you, John. Yeah, we're glad to hear. Yes, yeah. So uh just one thing, uh one last thing. Uh uh of course, I was reading those pictures about all of this. A lot of line items and and uh honestly, after reading, browsing all of those, I I got uh lightheaded. Reading all those numbers and they're very small.
Accounts.
You know, the accounts and you know, so uh is there a way that we can uh. Probably present this kind of numbers in a more friendly uh or readable manner, you know, or especially for our residents. Uh so that they would really like know uh where their tax uh money is going to. So for example, uh before like in we have those infographics like graphs or pie charts. So that he's being uh probably with just one glance, they can just say, oh, so our CP is spending more on this particular. You know, uh thing. Uh so maybe that could be a more better. But I I still appreciate the uh the line by line items, you know, because those are very specific. You know, so but again, some people would get like head in this for that.
We do that in the during on our budget presentation. We have pie charts.
Okay.
And I understand, you know, that everybody likes numbers, but. We we present everything by line item. So by department and they repeat as.
Yeah, so and every year of the budget we add more and more information and try to make it easier in public strategies. I used to free ball and span. Um and so every year it's gotten better. Um but. Doing it ourselves is a slow process. So Roberto and I looked at getting there. There are software systems out there that are uh developed for municipal governments that will take your budget and will. Give your information and actually spit out stuff that is easily digestible, but uh they're expensive. For a small appreciation, like us, it's kind of tough to swallow thirty thousand dollars a year for that. So that we have to wait what's what's the bank for the bucket that these guys have. That doesn't mean though, just to have a minimum over you to see that yet. We still have any other opportunities that are where we.
But but thank you for your zoom for helping us with our budget. Yeah, thank you so much. That's all we know, yeah.
We have more charts, George.
Definitely.
Oh, not well in Excel, but it's doable. We don't need that. Right now, the thirty thousand like John says, a lot of money.
If we can do it, we'll do it, which we do.
Thank you, yeah.
Right, thank you. I'll take it out to the public. Any public questions or comments?
I'm Alice Angel Green and I live on Socido Avenue. And I would like to add my strong support from council member Shirley's request. Sounds like a very sensible one to me and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
I also strongly agree with what was just said. I think um just like your mission sets. It's mission statement says it's to be inclusive. So I think we should be inclusive with the processes.
Me too.
Would you like to come up and vote?
I will notice on you and I agree with the last two. I think Ken Shirley's suggestion is great. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Need of the public comments? Other comments exposed. One of the things that I'll point out is the. Uh statement of the decrease in revenue for the sales tax. Which, you know, that our our number one source of income for the city is our sales tax. So. You know, that potentially down the road has um could could potentially create an impact for the city. And um my my question is. HBL, which is the company that does the analysis for sales tax for the city, usually sends out. A report. Have we received anything uh from them recently that talks about? The uh potential trajectory of of sales tax for the city?
No, I guess not. Most recent quarter, but that's now we. Well, folks on Delray Oaks will focus on creation and uh same.
Okay, got it. Okay, and what that does is it impacts the amount of money that we have. I mean, you just heard it. We do have money available for for projects. Uh we have to temper that with, you know, potential revenue that's going to come in. So we have to be real careful which projects we decide to take on. In many cases. There's also the constraint of bandwidth amongst the staff or our public works department to take on certain projects. The approach I want to take with that is very similar to what we have in place right now from this item. We have a finance committee that looks at the budget. We meet um nearly every month um or as needed. We get a briefing from Elizabeth on where we stand. Uh public is allowed to attend that. Um we don't have a great amount of attendance. Um but we do have folks that come that can voice their opinion and talk about. Um whatever issue they might have with how the the city is spending their money. That gives us an opportunity for the staff to provide input on it as well as the council members that are part of that committee. So that it can come to the city council, just like you saw today, where once again. The public uh is made aware of our financial situation. They're able to comment, make questions or take uh ask questions. Um so there's there's two opportunities to do that. And what it does is it 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 narrows down the focus. So that the council can really um focus in on a decision making, a a decision that maybe needs to be made. Or provide comments that are very focused to to the situation because the council has already looked through it or the committee has already looked through it. Regarding the the money that we have potentially for projects, I want to take the same approach that we've already established. Within the public works department, um or we'll have a, we do have a public works committee that can essentially do the same as the finance committee. That they can take a look at the projects, allow staff to provide input to it. The public is made aware of those meetings, just like our finance committee meetings. Where they can provide input and ask questions. So they have that opportunity right off the bat. It narrows down the focus uh so that it can come back to the council, just like we do with the budget. Where the entire council and once again, the public can come and make comments and and uh make have their questions answered. That approach is not only very inclusive and very transparent, but it gives more opportunities for the public to be involved. And um it allows the 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 council to also, the full council, to be involved in in any decision making. So i- in terms of any concerns that are out there, I think that addresses those with that process. Um and once again, it's a process that we already have in place. So I just wanted to to make those comments. Um Elizabeth, thank you very much for your report. Um and I'll move on to our next item, which is staff reports. Uh I think there was, the agenda says to accept. Okay, all right. Is is there a motion to accept? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Okay, now I'll move on to the staff. Um they are in the packet and city manager, city manager report. Uh correspondence is also in the packet. And our next meeting will be on April twenty second at six P M and we are in.